Okay, good morning, everyone.
Where do we get started?
All right, you know, I thought about taking Mayor Lycett up here, but I don't want to usurp his authority. I'll just pause it here. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, very good. Well, we're excited to be here. Thank you all for participating in the Sunshine Law Training today. My name is Jason Lewis. I'm General Counsel to Missouri Attorney General Andrew Bailey. Normally, we have our Director of Sunshine Law Training, Jay Turner. I think Miranda spoke to Jay Turner, Q and A might have as well. Jay normally does our presentations. He's given about a dozen this month alone, and the month's not even over. And he travels the state, so I'm hint hitting for Jay today. So if you don't like my presentation, just fill out the feedback form and say, "Mr. Turner was terrible." Back to Attorney General Bailey, that Mr. Lewis did not do a good job. So we're always gonna have Jay Turner need to follow guy. But the presentation, they will be about an hour, roughly an hour of content. When I give presentations, I like them to be a little bit more interactive. So if folks have questions, if what I'm saying doesn't make sense, please raise your hand, speak up. If not, we will save time at the end for any questions you have as well. So either way, raise your hand. If not, I'll have some Q and A time at the end. Whether in a group setting, in front of one has an individual question, if you feel more comfortable talking to me about one-on-one, please let me know, that's fine. I also have my contact information, our office's contact information. The last thing I'll mention is a housekeeping matter. Does everyone have a copy of this book? Most of you? You do not, okay. We have a few here. If you don't have a here, you're at least a testament.
Yeah, we'll get it.
A few.
I know, I know Jane Braxton, but the meeting is...
That might be the first edition. I've got one, but it's like antique.
We have thousands of these booklets. If anyone needs a copy, just please contact our office, and we will gladly send as many as the city or various departments need. We're happy to give our handbook. The reason why I mentioned the handbook is you'll see in our slides, at the very bottom right-hand corner of every slide, there's going to be a page number reference. The page number will correspond to content in our Sunshine Law Handbook. So folks can follow along. I'll also send Miranda a copy of the Sunshine Law Presentation PowerPoint. Feel free to disseminate this. This is a public record under the Sunshine Law, so if anyone wants a copy of the presentation, we're subject to Sunshine Law, just as the city is as well. And you can distribute the presentation to anyone that happens to want it, okay? All right, so we'll get started here. So first disclaimer, while I am an attorney in the Attorney General's Office, this presentation is not legal advice from me or from the Attorney General's Office. We're gonna spend a lot of time talking today about what the Sunshine Law requires, and mostly how our office interprets and how the courts interpret it. But I don't want the takeaway to be that the Attorney General said, "Cardiff must do X, Cardiff cannot do X." That is for the city's attorney to advise you on that. You know, I think the message should be pretty clear in how we interpret it. So if we do get other complaints, other investigations, this should give you a window into how we think about the Sunshine Law. We think we're right, but sometimes the court settles that we're wrong as well. But we do receive hundreds of complaints a year, and this is how we review the issues. Yes?
So I have questions, since this was posted as a meeting, and we do have quorum, there's no business to take place. Do we need to call it to order and take roll, since this is mandatory training?
I would view that as an internal governance matter. It certainly wouldn't hurt if you had posted this as a meeting, that's what you would normally do. The Sunshine Law would not address that in this specific context. But if the council would like to call it to order, I view that to be an internal governance issue, not so much as a Sunshine Law requires to do that right now. But that's really your call. If you would like to do that, whoever would normally call it to order, if you'd like to do so there, okay? So we'll call the June 20th special training needing to order. You wanna take roll?
I can call your name if you would like.
All right.
Taylor?
Present.
Peterson?
Present.
Leece?
Heckmaster?
Present.
Edge?
Present.
Snow?
Here.
Barlow?
Here.
Cossey?
Here.
Shran?
Here.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll be there for you. And a little bit of background about myself, again, I am attorney in the Attorney General's Office. I've been with the office for just under a decade. I was in private practice for a few years, and then during most of my time in the Attorney General's Office, I've worked a lot on the Sunshine Law, both internally as well as reviewing complaints, filing lawsuits, educating the public and public governmental bodies. So Sunshine Law is something I'm very passionate about, and I'm always happy to talk to folks that are interested in it. So, but again, none of this is legal advice from the Attorney General's Office to the city. We'd like to begin our presentation with a quote. So this quote comes from a federal judge, sitting on the Federal Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit. And while that case did not concern Missouri law specifically, it does concern transparency in general. And this quote, we find, should really be a kind of fundamental thought process into how open records and open meetings laws should be concerned, and the importance of transparency. And, you know, so the quote's on the slide here, "Democracies die behind closed doors. When the government begins closing doors, it selectively controls information rightfully belonging to the people. Selective information is misinformation." So again, this is not a Sunshine Law quote, but it is a great quote from a federal judge in a case. And we've always thought that it helps kind of inform the way that the Attorney General's Office thinks about the importance of public business and public meetings. So going to the Sunshine Law specifically. The Sunshine Law is one of the few laws in Missouri that actually have a policy statement. And the policy statement is found in Section 610.011, H30 quarter handbook. And it states that it is the public policy of this state that meetings, records, votes, actions, deliberations of public governmental bodies be open to the public unless otherwise provided by law. So what does this mean? In plain language, this means, when in doubt, everything is open. Everything is open, unless the Sunshine Law mandates or authorizes it to be closed. So when in doubt, we're all public servants, you're a public servant, I'm a public servant at the state level as well. What we do is presumed to be open. The thumb on the scale is tipping towards openness. We're gonna spend some time today talking about what are those exceptions, when things might be authorized to be closed. But if you come to the Sunshine Law, you come to your meetings with presumption that this is going to be open, maximize transparency, you're going to be in a good spot going forward. One takeaway that we like to tell folks is that public business is the public's business. The Sunshine Law actually defines what public business is, and it really is the public's business. And you come to this with that thought process, you'll avoid a lot of tripping hazards, a lot of pitfalls that were commonly encountered in the Sunshine Law. So to whom does the Sunshine Law apply? We spend a lot of time on this slide when we're training members of the public citizen so that they know who the Sunshine Law applies to. I think I'll breeze through this slide, because everyone knows we're all part of the city council, various departments, police department, fire department. Your entities are all subject to the Sunshine Law. But the Sunshine Law does reach pretty broadly. One interesting anecdote that we found is Missouri has the seventh most amount of public entities in the country, about as many as California. In California, there's a whole lot bigger than Missouri. The reason why is because Missouri has a lot of these special districts, ambulance districts, hospital districts, fire protection districts, sewer districts, water districts, the list goes, taxing districts. List goes on. Missouri has a proliferation of these smaller types of bodies. A lot of states don't structure their government in that way necessarily, but Missouri does. So the Sunshine Law reaches a lot of different parts of local and state government. The Sunshine Law also applies to committees. So this is a common question that we get in Sunshine, under the Sunshine Law. So let's say hypothetically, the city council decides to form a budget committee, or, you know, forms an employee morale committee. Committees are often going to be subject to Sunshine Law as long as that committee is reporting back up to the city council theoretically. So if a budget committee, for example, wants to have a meeting, that meeting itself might need to be separately posted under the Sunshine Law, like you normally would in a city council meeting. So committees often are their own distinct public governmental body as soon as they're created by the larger parent organization. So something to, a lot of, especially smaller towns often miss this one. But committees are subject to the Sunshine Law most of the time. There's always exceptions, but if you're forming a committee, most of the time, that's going to be its own public governmental body. What does Sunshine Law not apply to? So we get a lot of questions like this. The Sunshine Law does not apply to private entities, does not apply to homeowners associations, usually doesn't apply to nonprofits, sometimes it might, but usually doesn't. And then the Sunshine Law itself does not apply to individuals that are part of a governmental body. But I want to clarify that. So what this means is that, let's say you have a city employee or a city council member. If they happen to have their own records, you know, the council or the city itself will need to gather those records, produce them. But, you know, let's say I decide to have a meeting with a member of the public on the Attorney General's Office. My meeting with that member of the public, I don't have to post it under the Sunshine Law, because I am a body, but I am not a public governmental body, right? The city council is, the Attorney General's Office is. So when it comes to the Sunshine Law posting notices of meetings, that you happen to have one employee that just goes about their job, doing their business, and just has a staff meeting, you know, internally, probably not going to be subject to meetings requirements, but when you have the whole council, the whole city get together, that's when you're talking about the Sunshine Law. One exception to that general rule is that, let's say you have a law that creates a position. So for example, county sheriffs. County sheriffs are created by Missouri law. There's a case that we have on the slide here at the very bottom that held that a sheriff himself, a sheriff is a public governmental body. So there's some exceptions to this, but generally speaking, when we talk about the Sunshine Law, it's applying to larger entities, like a council, like a committee, like a police department, water department, for example. Sunshine Law policy, every public governmental body must have a policy. This is under law. Every body must have a written policy that is open to the public concerning Sunshine Law compliance. It can be detailed, it can be pretty detailed. The statute here, Section 610.028, does not have any really parameters on what you have to put in your Sunshine Law policy. It just has to pertain to the release of information on meetings, records, or votes. We've seen Sunshine Law policies that are a page and a half long. We've seen that they're 50 pages long. We have a sample form on our website, the Attorney General's Office website. We have sample forums, we have our handbook here in committee format as well. We have some guidance and F and Qs. We also have a sample Sunshine Law policy that we believe complies. And we're always happy to work with cities and counties and anyone that wants our thoughts on the Sunshine Law policy. Again, we can't give you the legal advice, but we can say, hey, we think this contains everything it's supposed to contain. So if the council or the city is thinking about what does its Sunshine Law policy look like, we're more than happy to just take a look at it and give you some guidance and pointers accordingly. So those are some general housekeeping informal matters under the Sunshine Law. The rest of the presentation will be divided into two parts, public meetings and then public records. So now we're gonna talk about public meetings before going into public records. Any questions so far, before we go into public meetings requirements? Nothing so far, okay. So what is a public meeting? The Sunshine Law defines a public meeting to be whenever a quorum, which means half plus one, when a quorum of a public governmental body decides to meet. But meetings can happen in a variety of different ways. Meetings can happen in person, which is how we normally think about meetings, people getting together for a council meeting. But meetings can happen by conference call, that can happen virtually, that can happen by email or text. Meetings can take a lot of different forms, especially in the 21st century. Any questions, especially on electronic meetings, conference calls, emails? This could be a hot button issue from time to time, and I'm happy to talk for some of that.
So is there a requirement, if you're doing a conference call, do you have to be visible and voice, or can you only be, can you be present by voice only?
It's a great question. The Sunshine Law leads us up to the public governmental body. The issue is that if you do have a quorum getting together, whether it is by conference call, voice only, or by Zoom, WebEx, whatever it might be, you'll still need to post notice of that. There are certain requirements depending on how votes are taken. Voting is a pretty complicated topic under the Sunshine Law. There's a few statutes talking about, why do you have to do a roll call versus a voice vote? And some of that depends on how the council is gathering. For example, if you're having everyone video, that might be a different voting requirement, whether it's a roll call or not, whether it's voice only. Either way, whenever a governmental body does get together, if it's voice only, conference call, in-person, virtual, where you can see people's face, the public needs to have access to the link so that they can dial in to the conference number or access the Zoom meeting, whatever it might be. Does that answer your question?
We, sorry. We've been told that you have to see them when they vote.
Yeah, and that's getting into the voting requirement. So I think the best way to answer that, this presentation, I kind of call our 101 to 102 level Sunshine Law class. Voting, I view to be more of an in-depth advanced Sunshine Law class, and we're happy to talk about more offline. Voting is really case-dependent, depending on what's being voted on. If it's open or closed session, for example, closed sessions always have to be by roll call vote. But whether it's, you know, in-person, video, or conference call, might change how you take votes. So we don't cover that a whole lot in our intermediate-level training. We have to talk more about it. There's a specific fact to have at our presentation. Okay?
I do, I'm sorry, I do have one question, and this is probably more along the lines of a technical question. So, because this is when a meeting of many of these people are together to discuss public business. So does the, is that specific to upcoming public business that is to be voted on? Or can that, or does that also apply to businesses that has passed? So for example, last year, we had to have this big meeting at Memorial Hall because a whole bunch of things happened, and we had like great people there. And after the meeting, there were some council people who were talking, and they were talking about what had just happened in the meeting. So it was something that had passed, not something that was upcoming. But then there was a concern, you know, oh, do we have a quorum of a committee here? That's kind of another thing, but we're afraid we have a quorum of a committee here, we probably shouldn't be discussing this, so.
Right. Yes, it's a really good question. I think we'll cover some of that when we talk about agenda requirements and what is a meeting versus what is not a meeting. That might even be in my next slide, if I remember what the next slide is going to look like. Again, every situation a little bit different. The general, you know, principle is if a topic of public business is being discussed and you have a majority together, maybe refrain from having that discussion, even if you're not voting on it. Discussion alone would trigger the Sunshine Law's obligations. Before we move on to the next slide, I do want to spend just a very quick note on emails. The Sunshine Law has been around for 50 years. It had its 50th anniversary just last year. Missouri was one of the first states to have any kind of a public records or public meetings law half a century ago. The Sunshine Law has not necessarily kept up with the times with respect to detailed provisions on how do you keep track of emails? What happens if you have everyone on an email together? So we do the best with what we're given by what the General Assembly passes in its laws. Typically speaking, the way that the Attorney General's Office views this, the Sunshine Law does not prohibit someone from pressing "reply all." You know, that would pretty much impede a lot of emails being sent. You know, you need to post a public meeting notice every time someone pressed "reply all" on an email. I mean, I can't imagine what that would do. That said, there is no court guidance on this, there's no judicial opinions on this. The one thing to keep in mind, though, is if you had a quorum that is on a group email, and everyone is pressing "reply all" frequently, and it turns out to be, you know, a large email correspondence taking place over days or weeks, that might be toeing a line a little bit into public meetings. But, you know, let's say that you have, for example, a clerk that is sending out this notice to everyone. Just be advised, you know, the building's going to be closed tomorrow, but then the whole council's on that. That doesn't sound like a meeting, right? But it kind of raises me questions, you know, what is a meeting versus what is not a meeting? You get into these really weird kind of assessments when you have emails going on. So the best advice is just to be careful when you have group emails, and if you're having people that are consistently talking about something in an email with a quorum present in the email, you know, maybe save that for the meeting. But if you just have one person pressing "reply all," you know, thank you so much, sincerely, Jason. I probably did not have a meeting by pressing "reply all." Does that make sense, kind of probably think about these issues?
So when we get an email that says, "Will you be available for a meeting Tuesday?" And everybody replies "all," that's not a meeting?
Probably not.
It's a meeting, to have a meeting?
You're not gonna find a court opinion of this, and it's one of those, you know, situations where the Sunshine Law has not kept up with modern times. We would not view that to be a meeting. Of course, a court could tell us that we're wrong, but if we get a complaint about that, I don't think we're gonna be looking into that specifically. So here we go, what is not a public meeting? So there is one very helpful case from the mid-'90s where the Court of Appeals gave some examples of what is a meeting versus what is not a meeting. In this case, what happened is you had, I believe it was a school district, a school board that got together, and they were at, you had a quorum there, so you actually had a quorum of the body that was present. They met at someone's house. It wasn't in a normal school, a school board building, it was at someone's house. And they ended up just talking generally about employee morale issues. No one's name was mentioned, they were just talking kind of generally. It was unstructured, it wasn't posted, there was no agenda, no one convened it to order, no one was taking charge talking. Remember, right, there might have even been a, I think there was just an informal gathering, and then someone mentioned employee morale, and then they moved on. But the Court of Appeals held, that was not a meeting, that was not a public meeting, even though you did have a quorum getting together. And these are some factors that the court examined to determine whether this specific event was a meeting or not a meeting. If it doesn't look like a meeting, doesn't talk like a meeting, it's probably not going... It's one of those that you might know it when you see it. And then I think that's, I think Councilmember Cossey, you answered, you asked a question about, you know, you had members getting together after Memorial, I think, Day event. You know, that's one of those gray areas where err on the side of caution, post it, maybe save it to a formal meeting. You know, I will say that this case that we're referencing came out almost 30 years ago. I have a feeling that the court today would probably view that situation differently. But nevertheless, this is binding guidance, and you will still want to err on the side of caution to post things and save items for a public meeting whenever possible. I mean, you don't want to be that test case that overturns this opinion, right? Any questions about that, and, you know, what is a meeting, what is not a meeting? Yes?
I'm gonna ask this one. So if the mayor calls for a meeting with an entity outside of City Hall, say, what I'm gonna use today for an example, we're meeting with the Humane Society. If we have three council members present, does that constitute a posting?
How many council members are typically in the council?
Well, there are 10, but then our committees are four.
Right.
But this isn't exactly a committee, you know, it's just the mayor has selected these individuals.
So I'll give you an example of this. So a couple of years ago, our office received a complaint. It was concerning a city in St. Louis County, which is my neck, it was where I live, eastern half of the state. And in this situation, it was a city council had six members, and there were two sets of three elected from various wards. You had the older person, you know, one and two from Ward 1, and three and four from a different ward. And two older persons from their same ward decided to get together and just had a town hall. So obviously, two out of six is not a quorum, but the concern was possibly, well, those two people are from the same ward, they had a town hall within their own neighborhood, without a public meeting. In our office, we thought that probably was not a meeting, because ultimately, you know, one person is not a public governmental body, you need to have a quorum present. And they weren't really a committee either, they weren't fully constituted, they weren't formed by an ordinance. No one formed them to be the committee of, like, you just had two people that wanted to talk to their constituents in a town hall. We did not think that was a meeting, so we closed our investigation, and there was no court case or reply. I think the court would probably agree with us on that one. You know, I can't be specific to a set of facts, and it lies on, you know, whether this meeting with, you know, the Humane Society might be a meeting or not. But if you, you know, think, is this actually a committee, number one? Number two, do you have a quorum of the whole council together? And the other thing to think about is elected individuals, you know, need to talk to your constituents. You need to do your job to talk to the public, talk to businesses. You know, if every time that one council member talked to one business, had to post a public meeting, I don't think the Sunshine Law requires that, because you're not really having a quorum, and it's not a committee at the same point.
So as long as there's not a quorum of a specific standing committee, so, because none of the members are on the same, I mean, the three wouldn't constitute a quorum of a standing committee.
You know, without giving an answer on that specific set of facts and giving legal advice, I think if you looked at the principles through this one over, where committees are covered, a quorum of the main body is covered, and if neither of those two tests are being met, then, you know, maybe not. But, you know, you need to think, how does a council even form committees? Sometimes we hear about cities and counties forming ad hoc committees, where maybe it's not created by an ordinance, but, you know, you have three people that do all the budget stuff. Maybe they don't even call themselves a budget committee, but everyone knows they're the ones that work on the budget in forehand. And then you're getting into this gray area of what is a committee versus what is not a committee. The way that we would think about it in our office, we received a complaint, is how does a governmental body normally form a committee? Does a body normally take a vote and say, "We're forming the budget committee, we're forming, you know, the Economic Development Committee"? And if the, you know, and if this specific entity is not formed how it would normally form, then maybe it's not a committee. But that's really more of an internal governance policy, and how do you actually form your committees on the council?
No, it makes sense if the mayor hasn't directly formed an ad hoc committee, then it's not necessarily a party.
You know, the best advice is to always follow the normal procedures. If the council's normally forming committees in one way, stick to that. And that way, you know what is a committee versus what is not a committee.
And also, if you have more council members that wanted to attend that certain meeting, and there's an observer instead of an active member, what would that look like?
Yeah, and that's a tricky question.
Because it's a open meeting.
We're not gonna find a court case on that. I mean, certainly everyone has the ability to observe anything they want to observe, but let's say, in that hypothetical, the observers end up talking and taking over the meeting, then it starts looking like you're getting into a meeting. So, you know, just be mindful of who's talking, who's not talking, is this a committee, is it not a committee? You know, you don't want to be the test case that overturns case law and, you know, really...
We don't?
Hopefully not, hopefully you don't want to be the test case. Types of public meetings, there are only two types. There's open meetings, and there are closed meetings. The Sunshine Law does not use terms like executive session, special session, work session. Those words mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. It doesn't mean that a governmental body cannot use those terms, but we tend to encourage bodies to use only open and closed, because those are the only terms that you will actually see in the Sunshine Law. If you tell someone that we're having a work session, I don't know what that means. I've heard that term around the state in a lot of different contexts, and I still can't figure out what a work session is. Every governmental body has work sessions that look massively different from each other. Best practice, only use open, only use closed, avoid using other terms so that the public knows what exactly you're doing in a meeting. Notice requirements are pretty straightforward under the Sunshine Law. Notice requirements are pretty straightforward under sunshine law. There's not a lot of requirements here. The notice has to include the tain, uh, the time, date, place. Your tentative agenda, we'll talk about agendas. So your time, date, place, agenda. And also, if the meeting will be conducted by telephone or electronic means. You need to have the mechanisms by which the public can log on, observe the meeting, if you're doing it telephonically or electronically. So not a lot of requirements for public notices in Missouri. Um, but you gotta make sure they're all present. Sometimes we'll see the notices that don't have a place because the hypothetical city assumed that everyone knows, we always meet at city hall. So they don't put it on the agenda. You still have to put it on the agenda, even if everyone knows what you need all the time. So make sure you don't miss any of those requirements on your notices. All notices must be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance for open meetings and closed meetings. So if you have a council getting together and it's only to discuss one item of closed business, you still need to post that notice so the public knows. The council got together and did something, even if it is authorized to be closed. The meeting notice must be in a prominent place that's easily accessible. This is one of those examples of the sunshine law not keeping up with modern times. You know, it used to be that, um, especially in smaller towns, everyone went by city hall all the time. So you only needed to have one notice on a bulletin board. You know, in the twenty-first century, you have people that don't walk into city halls much like they used to. They rely on the internet. They rely on Facebook or newsletters, email alerts. Um, but the sunshine law does not require that. The sunshine law only requires to have a physical posting, one posting only. But we wanna do better with it, right? It's twenty twenty-four, we wanna make sure citizens know how to access meetings. So our office strongly encourages to go above and beyond. It's not specifically required to do so, but we encourage it. You have a Facebook page, you have, um, you have other accounts, you have a city website. Use it, that might be, uh, a better way of reaching the public. And go above and beyond what your minimum requirements are. The one exception to that is if you are having a virtual meeting, you do need to have a virtual notice. So if you have a WebEx or Zoom-only meeting, you do actually need to post that notice online. But if you're having a normal in-person meeting, you don't have to post notice online, we just encourage that. For that twenty-four hours notice, do not count we, weekends or holidays. So let's say you're meeting Monday at seven o'clock, you'll need to post the notice by Friday at seven. Don't post it Sunday at seven, that's less than twenty-four hours notice. You need to exclude your weekends and holidays when you're counting what twenty-four hours actually means. For emergency and short notice meetings. So this is another area of the law that's pretty gray. We get a lot of questions on what constitutes a valid emergency, what constitutes a valid short notice meeting. And although sunshine law's been on the books for over fifty years, there's not a single case, not one, we've looked many times. There's not one that talks about what is an appropriate emergency situation. What is an appropriate short notice meeting? Uh, there is a case that is pending right now at the Court of Appeals. Our office is watching it. We actually submitted a brief on the issue that talks about how our office views emergency and short notice requirements. That case concerns the fire protection district on the western half of the state here. But there's no case law on this. So what are we left with? We're left to, what does an ordinary Joe on this street think an emergency is? The city clerk forgetting to post a meeting notice, probably not going to be an emergency, save until the next day. That's how our office uses this. You know, everyone's gonna view this differently because there's not a court opinion on this. But when I think of emergency, I am thinking, the city hall's flooded. Someone passed away. Or there's, you know, immediate, uh, termination that has to happen because someone's stealing money from the city hall. You, you know, thinking of things that are really high-profile, very sensitive. That's what I think about when I think of emergency. You know, everyone might have a different conception of this. Um, but we don't have court guidance on this, so we're left to just common sense. And again, you don't wanna be that test case that pushes, did we really have to meet today? Or could it have waited one more day? Maybe could even wait a few more hours. I mean, the sunshine law only requires twenty-four hours notice. So could it wait six more hours? Could it wait twelve more hours? If it could wait, maybe it's not an emergency. That's how we think about this issue in our office. You know, we understand there's gonna be differences in opinions. But typically, you don't wanna be the test case that pushes the boundaries. You don't wanna get in trouble. We wanna err on the side of public transparency and maximizing access to meetings. Uh, but again, you're not gonna see a court opinion on this yet. We're hopeful for a court opinion on that one case sometime later this year. Any questions about emergency meetings and short notice meetings? Okay. Let's talk about agendas, you know, for, but I know agendas have been a half-luckin' issue down here. This is also one area of the law where you're not gonna see a single court opinion on it in Missouri. Not one. The agenda requirements have been on the books for fifty years in Missouri law. And for whatever reason, there's not been a single Court of Appeals published opinion on this issue. The one case I just mentioned earlier about the fire protection district and emergency meetings. That case also has an issue about tentative agendas. And our office wrote a brief on that to tell the court what we think about this in the Attorney General's Office. But until that case is decided, what we're left with is common sense. So the sunshine law has the phrase tentative agenda. That is what the law specifically says. You can look that up, it's in the definition section. In section six, ten dot zero two zero. It says that governmental bodies most post, must post their tentative agenda. And what tentative means to one person is a lot different than what tentative means to another person. So we're left with a situation where, you know, governmental body can only act through a quorum of people. And if you happen to have, let's say hypothetical, council member Smith that really wants to talk about something in a council meeting, but it's not on the agenda. Is that a violation? You know, you're gonna have a lot of differences of opinion on this. The way that the Attorney General's abuse, uh, this issue is because a council can only act through a quorum. If you happen to have one person on the council raising their hand and saying, I really wanna talk about this, even though it's not on the agenda. Everyone has a First Amendment right, just, just keep on whatever they wanna speak about. Where we think the obstacles are, is when then everyone starts talking about it. And then you have the quorum talking about that one issue. That's when you're getting into sunshine law issues from our office's perspective. Because the sunshine law, you know, it can't trump the First Amendment, right? Everyone has their views that they should be able to say. But the problem is when you happen to have a quorum and everyone is jumping in the bandwagon. And now you have eight people talking about the issue, even though only one person raised their hand. The best practice is that everyone should stick to the agenda, right? You know, we can't tell someone, don't say this. You know, everyone has a First Amendment right, um, in this country. But on the other hand, you know, just put it on the agenda, be safe. You want the public to be able to hear discussions, to know about things. So when in doubt, put it on the agenda. And when in doubt, maybe say go to the next meeting so that the public knows that topic will come up, um, at a public meeting. Yes?
So then is it best, uh, so say the individual has something that they wanna talk about, but the mayor has not put it on the agenda. Is it best for that person to say, I would like this to be discussed at the next meeting? And then they take a vote to make it, to add it to the next agenda?
That's, I think, exactly what, you know, we're trying to talk about here. I, I view that to be really more of a kind of internal governance perspective that each elected member needs to do what they think is best. But sometimes that might be pushing the line with what the sunshine law says. Again, the way that our office thinks about it is when you have a quorum that's talking about it. That's when you get into sunshine law and notice and agenda issues. But, I mean, my understanding, the way that most city governments work is anyone can ask them to be on the agenda. You know, and then it's for the agenda maker to decide, no, we're going to do this, or no, we're not gonna do this. And that's really for the body to figure out on their own and to have a good rapport with each other to function well, cohesively. So that touches on the sunshine law, but also touches on things that the sunshine law doesn't cover. The sunshine law doesn't answer every question, potentially. And I think that's one of those where, you know, it's for the governmental body to figure out what will be on the agenda. The problem is that when you have a whole quorum that's not talking about it all at once.
But if the mayor does not put it on the agenda and they have to have a way to talk about it, so that's what we're trying to determine.
Something the sunshine law doesn't answer on the board.
Well, and Tracy, we've had, we've, there've been a number of attorneys that have weighed in on this. And they believe that tentative agenda is just exactly that. If we have the mayor who is refusing to put things on the agenda that should be on there, when they've had a lot of people requesting it. And they're illegally blocking this and working in collusion with, let's say, a former city administrator and a former city attorney. They, it, it is the opinion of several attorneys I've talked to that we can put it on there because the word tentative is not interpreted. And so I understand the Attorney General's Office has a position on this. But there have been several attorneys who have said that we are legally authorized to put that on the agenda because of the word tentative and because we are being improperly blocked. So it's, and, and it would have to come down to a court case, is my understanding for that interpretation, that the Attorney General would not be able to penalize us for putting that on there. It would have to go through a court.
Well, so I mean, those are tricky challenges. You know, the Attorney General's Office, we don't hesitate to file lawsuits when we have to. We try to provide education and training when we can and to let people, at least let people know, here's how we view the issue. And again, even though the sunshine law has been on the books for half a century. We don't have a single Court of Appeals case on this issue. So let's go back to first principles. Sunshine law encourages transparency, the public knowing what's going on. You know, maybe err on the side of putting things on the agenda and having discussion about it. But you're not gonna see a court case on this. And the way that we view it is a lot of this is probably not even answered by the sunshine law. You know, sunshine law only answers so many questions, it doesn't answer every question.
And, and I want, I wanna say first, I appreciate your opinion and I know you're here just to give education and, and not a legal opinion. But a, as you know, this has been, this specific issue has been an issue for us because our city is in turmoil and because of the situation where we are. And so the reason that I wanted to clarify that for Tracy is because we have a reporter in the audience and we have some people who are in the, and we have some people who are here who are doubtless going to go be posting on Facebook. And if we aren't clear with the position, they're going to say, the Attorney General's Office said you can't put that on the agenda, which is not true. We can put it on the agenda and, and, you know, I understand that's the position, but that's not the official legal position. It, it has to go through a court to, to decide whether or not that is right or wrong. And we have had legal opinions that, that are in opposition to that, that say that we can't put that on the, the agenda because our city hall has refused to put it on there properly. So I just wanna make sure, that's why I wanna make sure we're clear, because we have a number of ears and a number of posters who are here today. And so I wanna make sure that they're very clear on, on what that is.
Any other questions about this law? Yes?
So, tentative, can it not be amended by a motion to amend and a vote of the majority?
That's a, that's a great question. You're not gonna find a single published Court of Appeals case on this one. Uh, I will say that the case I've mentioned concerning a fire protection district in, um, western Missouri, um, has that issue also in the case. And our office has written a brief on the issue. Um, but just in the interest of time, I wanna move a little bit quickly. But it is a challenging question. You know, the law has not been updated to cover all those situations. You know, you need to just make sure that the public is aware of what's going on. The way that we think about that issue, it's, it's sort of like the emergency issue. You know, tentative has to mean something. Tensive does not mean permanent. Tensive has a dictionary definition. But on the other hand, you know, the public needs to know what's being discussed at a meeting. And the way that we think about the issue is when you have a quorum that knows in advance and wants to discuss something. Put it on the agenda twenty-four hours in advance. You know, and if you wait another day, wait another day. You know, you don't wanna push the envelope. You want to make sure the public has the most amount of opportunity to attend meetings. And it never hurts to put things on an agenda, right? The, we'll talk about this in a couple more slides about closed, um, closed meetings, closed topics and open meetings and open topics. Um, but the, the end of the day, uh, governmental bodies get in trouble not for discussing too much or having too much on the agenda. They get in trouble for closing too much, withholding too much, not putting things on agendas, right? So I'm not aware of a single case where a governmental body got in trouble because they put too much on the agenda. Or they decided to open too much business, right? You, they get in trouble by closing too much, withholding too much information. So just think about those principles. You think about those principles, you should be avoiding a lot of these hot-luckin' issues.
What if the city attorney deems that it's against the charter and that's why they didn't write it up to be on the?
That's something that we can't give.
It's, it's not the city atti, a city attorney's job is purely ministerial. They are only to put it in the correct format. Their job is not to make a kind of ruling. No, their, their job is not to make any kind of ruling. Their job is literally, it's more of like a secretarial role. They write it up in the right format and put it on. It's for the council to vote on. And then if it's illegal, that goes through a court process. It is, it was never our city attorney's job to decide whether it's illegal or not. Now, they can provide information to the council and say, I've written this up as requested and I believe that this violates the charter. I believe that this violates some, you know, state law or something. And then at that point, um, the council can decide whether or not to make forward, move forward or make tweaks. But what Mr. Dally did was inappropriate and incorrect.
So in the interest of time.
Discretion of the mayor to put it on the agenda or not, right? If he's running the meeting?
No, not if the city council votes.
I'm not seeing Mr. Willis, actually.
So, and I just wanna be clear that, you know, we're not here to answer and give advice on specific facts or get into, you know, disputes. We understand that, you know, we're here because we wanted to avoid going to court and give the best, uh, guidance that we can under the sunshine law. And I know that there's a lot of disputes on the council. The council will need to figure out a lot of these issues and talk to its own attorney about this. Um, and this is for education and training only. As far as the question that was just asked about, you know, who can put things on the agenda. You're not gonna find that provision in chapter six, ten of the sunshine law. A lot of this happens as an internal governance standpoint, who's in charge of making agendas? Some cities, you have a clerk do it. Some cities, you have the, the presiding council person do it. Some cities, you have a mayor. That is something for a governmental body to work out on its own. And again, I think the court decisions out there already are pretty clear. You wanna err on the side of transparency, maximizing public attendance. And not getting into situations where the public doesn't know something going on.
I, I do have one question generally about notice. So, and this kinda comes back to Ms. Almond Dean's question. So I know, I know from your perspective, you would like to see things on the agenda. And there is a reason that, that it says tentative agenda. So if a city council votes in one meeting, because this has happened. If a city council votes, okay, we, we know we can't discuss it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda. But we want X, Y, and Z put on the agenda for the next meeting. We have now officially, does that not count as notice? We have voted it in, it is to be put on the agenda. Whether or not the mayor does what he was required to do by vote and put it on the agenda, does that not constitute notice?
That is not a sunshine law question. That is an eternal governance matter that the city council needs to figure out, you know, on their own. You're not going to find that answer in a court case or a chapter six, ten provision of sunshine law. And a lot of these issues are really about the functioning of a governmental body. The sunshine law talks about what the public needs to know about. But the mechanisms for how things get on the agenda, that's for a governmental body, whether it's Carvey, whether it's St. Louis City, whether it's anyone else. Needs to, you know, make the best decisions to ensure that everyone is, you know, being notified about what has to be on the agenda. But you're not gonna find that specific answer in the sunshine law.
And could you, just, just so I can read up on it, could you point me to the correct provision where I see the definition of notice in the sunshine law?
Sure, uh, section six, ten dot zero two zero has the sunshine law provisions on, uh, notice and what notice must be likely declared. As we talked about, you know, the sunshine law has not been amended often over the years. So a lot of these are, you know, we're stuck with what is a policy of the sunshine law, what a court said about it. And we're really, you know, eager for some more guidance from the courts. Um, I, I wanna spend just a quick second on specificity of agendas. Sometimes our office will see, uh, sample agendas that just say, old business and new business, with nothing else on there. We need to, I think, disabuse governmental bodies of notion that that is a sufficient level of specificity. You know, if you have someone in the public that sees a notice and all it says is old business and new business. Are they going to be able to make an informed decision about whether to attend the meeting? My guess is not. You know, those are the only words on the agenda. You know, if you see words like budget, budget can mean a lot of different things. The word, you know, grants, for example, can mean a lot of different things. So let's say, for example, uh, So, let's say, for example, um, you see an agenda that says the phrase park permit on there. Well, and maybe that sounds interesting to some members of the public, maybe not. But if it turns out that the reason why park permits are being discussed is to spend $5 million on a New Year's Eve fireworks display, all of a sudden, that sounds like a pretty important topic. You know, the phrase, "You don't want to hide an elephant in a mouse hole." That's kind of how we think about the sunshine law. You want to give the public enough notice and enough specificity so that they can make an informed decision about whether to attend a meeting or not. This is also one of those issues where you don't have a single Missouri Court of Appeals opinion on this. Uh, so, we're looking forward to some resolution of the courts at some point soon. But, you know, we think that the standard is probably, does the public have enough information to make a decision that they should attend a meeting or not based on what's on the agenda? And again, you don't want to be the test case that says it wasn't specific enough, the public didn't know enough information. Just add a few more words to the agenda and you're probably going to get out of some people's trouble. Recording meetings, this issue doesn't pop up a whole lot. The principles in the sunshine law, they say that the governmental body shall allow members of the public to record public meetings, open meetings. The governmental body can establish guidelines on how recording shall happen. The last thing to keep in mind is, uh, the sunshine law is a civil law. It doesn't have criminal penalties except for one provision. If someone happens to, let's say secretly record, um, a closed meeting without permission of a public governmental body, that could be a class C misdemeanor. That is the only criminal provision in the entire sunshine law. Otherwise, it's just a civil statute only. So, if there's any questions about recording closed meetings, there has to be a, um, an actual authorization, whether a standing authorization or an individual meeting by meeting authorization to be able to record a closed meeting.
This happened to us. Miranda recorded one of our closed meetings. We questioned it. She said it was because, um, she wanted to remember everything, even though we did not get permission for it.
But I think the mayor asked.
That you didn't have permission of the council to do that.
So, it's, it's another example of, of city hall.
That's why we are all in this training today.
Right, right. I'm just asking.
So, this training is for education, it's not to get into disputes?
So, that was not correct?
We're going to move on to the next slide. So, public meetings, uh, we'll talk about minutes, minutes next. Uh, the sunshine law does not contain a lot of information about what has to be in meetings and meeting minutes. You will find this statute in six ten dot zero two zero, the same statute about notices. Sub, uh, subsection seven has a provision about what has to be in meeting minutes. Also pretty straightforward. You need to have the date, time, place, listed everyone present, listed everyone absent, listed your votes. And if any provision of the meeting was closed, we need to cite a specific section of the sunshine law used to close a meeting. I'll talk about that, I think, as the next slide on what those citations are, what the minutes have to have citations to the law. And then, uh, let's say that there was an emergency meeting or a short notice meeting. The minutes have to explain the good cause, the reasons why the meeting was held on less than 24 hours' notice. What you're not going to see in the requirements is how detailed do the minutes have to be? Does it have to be a transcript, you know, word for word recitation of what everyone said? You know, you're not going to find that in the sunshine law, but, you know, in the absence of court of appeals guidance, all that we can do in our office is share best practices. Have some detail, have some information, be narrative. You know, the minutes are, under law, the official proceedings of the record of the official proceedings of a governmental body. So, you know, when in doubt, be narrative, be detailed. Uh, does it have to be a word for word transcript? Uh, the sunshine law doesn't require that. Um, but you want to be accurate. You want to have as much information as possible so that everyone knows what happened in the most recent meeting. And again, you know, if open meetings are being recorded and that there's authorization to record a closed meeting, you know, you have that backup with the recording as well to, you know, show what happened. But the minutes themselves, be as detailed as possible as a best practice. Okay, let's talk about closed meetings for a bit. Again, remember we talked about earlier, the default is everything is open. On the sunshine law, the default means all business, all meetings are open meetings. When you get to section six ten dot zero two one of the sunshine law, it has a whole lot of reasons. There are 25, 25 different subsections where meetings are authorized to be closed. That does not mean they're mandated to be closed. It means they're authorized to be closed. A public governmental body can always vote and say, you know, even though we're authorized to close it, we think there's good reason for the public to know about it. That's a choice for the governmental body to make. We'll talk about the reasons why authorization might be permissible, but that is a key practice to keep in mind. The sunshine law is required to be open. Meetings are required to be open unless authorization specifically given to be closed. And again, as we talked about before, liability happens for improper closure, not for over disclosure. Again, public business is the public's business. You want to err on the side of openness unless you're extremely convinced that something is authorized to be closed. As I mentioned, there are 25 different reasons why something can be closed. We're not going to talk about all 25. Many of them are not used on a very frequent basis only. Um, anyway, so this slide has some examples of what, uh, what could be closable under the sunshine law. Uh, things like legal actions, getting advice from an attorney, uh, certain real estate transactions, certain personnel decisions, you know, things that, you know, there might be some privacy interest behind tend to be the motivations why something could be authorized to be closed under the sunshine law. Some of these provisions, though, are what have what we call event-based cuttings. So, something might be authorized to be closed for a certain period of time, but then when the deal is done, settlement is reached, you know, then certain things might be authorized to then be open, mandated to be open at a certain point in the future. So, you want to make sure that you're looking at all these provisions individually. And also, when you're taking the vote to go into closed session, when you're keeping your minutes, that you identify the specific statutory citation. The sunshine law requires a specific statutory citation, uh, to announce when you're going into closed session and then when you're keeping the minutes as well. Any questions on closed meetings generally? Yes?
So, back to tentative agenda. Can we vote without it being on the tentative agenda to go into closed session without?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. You don't, we don't have a specific court of appeals guidance on this. So, how we think about it in our office is going back to those first principles again. If it's not on the agenda to begin with, could it wait until the next meeting? If it could wait until the next meeting, the best practice, wait until the next meeting. Doesn't have to be discussed now, especially if it's not on the agenda. You know, and it's, you know, kind of going around circles again. You know, if it's not on the agenda, what can you do about this? You know, the governmental body needs to have good practices and internal controls in place to know that, you know, things can make it on the agenda, you know, if people want it to be on, on the agenda. But if it's not on there, then you're back to square one again. Should we even be discussing it at all or not?
I mean, I guess by definition of closed, it's not open to the public and wouldn't that?
Great question. I think that actually takes us to the next slide and that is how to close a meeting. So, let's say you have governmental body getting together and wants to have a closed meeting and it's only going to be a closed meeting. Maybe it's, you know, you don't have the open session. You're only getting together, you know, to make a personnel decision, to talk about a lawsuit with an attorney. The sunshine law still requires notice of that meeting and notice of the specific section of the sunshine law to authorize that from happening. And there's two ways to do so under the sunshine law. Under this court case that we're quoting on this slide here, there's two ways to close a meeting. One is you can take a vote. This is how it normally happens in Missouri. One, you can take a vote and if a quorum says, "Great, we're going to talk about this in closed session." Here's a citation of the law. You take a vote. You go into closed session. That's option number one. Option number two is really for those standalone meetings where the only purpose is to hold a closed meeting. You have a notice like you normally would have the notice. You'll put on the agenda what is generally going to be discussed, citation of the sunshine law. And then when you do get together, as long as it's the standalone meeting, then you're good to go.
So, we don't have to take a vote in that case to close it if it's only a closed?
Yeah, so that's how we interpret the sunshine law under this court case. So, this court case right ahead is, we're just quoting from it here, has these two methods. That's joined by the disjunctive or semi-colon four. So, or the governmental body can give notice of its intention to hold a meeting, cite the section six ten dot oh two one provision. You know, and you might not need to take a vote. As a matter of formality, can you? Sure. We actually encourage it in our office. You know, we encourage us to follow both methods. Take the vote, even if it's a standalone meeting only, even if it's just a matter of formality and, uh, you know, make sure it's on the notice as well, that it's going to be closed and it's on the, it's on the agenda that a court of public is going to pop up. Yes?
Uh, when they make a motion to close the meeting, do they have to say, "I make a motion to go into closed session according to six ten oh two one, paragraph two" or whatever? Do they have to read the title of that paragraph?
So, yeah, I think that's exactly what we're talking about here. So, the sunshine law only states that you have to reference the statute only. So, let's say that it's section six ten dot zero two one one or section six ten dot zero two one three. Do you then have to keep, you know, reading off the whole thing? The sunshine law doesn't say so, but as a best practice, it takes about five seconds. You know, say it's for attorney-client privilege advice, you know, it's for personnel decision, you know, it's to talk about real estate. That's how most entities in Missouri do it. But if you look at the sunshine law, it only states citation of the law. So, that's the minimum requirement.
So, they can say for, uh, legal. They can shorten?
Uh, you still have to have a citation of the law.
Yeah, six ten oh two, well, okay, so the agenda has six ten oh two one, um, paragraph one and it lists the full description of legal. Um, but when they make the motion to go into closed session, can they say six ten oh two one, uh, paragraph one for legal purposes?
Yeah, that seems to cover the requirements under the sunshine law. So, the motion, and that's what we're talking about, you know, when you make the motion to go into closed session, the motion needs to say at minimum the citation of the law. Then if you want to supplement that with additional helpful information, uh, we'd like to go above and beyond the requirements and, and to say legal actions. But the sunshine law only says citation of the law.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on how to go into closed session? Again, best practices, vote, agenda and take a vote. That is how we view, uh, the sunshine law best practices to work. All right, we're going to go to public records next. Any final questions on public meetings before we move into public records? Okay. So, what is a public record? A public record is defined to be any record, any record, whether written or electronically stored, uh, retained by or of any public governmental body. We do have a lot of court of appeals guidance on, on records. There's not as much in the meetings context comparatively, but there's a lot of court of appeals opinions on public records. And courts construe record very broadly, very broadly. One thing to keep in mind, so the sunshine law, it talks about record production. Assuming you have it, here's how you produce it, here's how things are open, here's how things are closed. The sunshine law talks about record production. But as a threshold matter, what do you have to retain to begin with? Do you even need to keep the record? That is not a sunshine law issue. That is an issue in a different chapter of the law called chapter one oh nine, a state and local records law. And there's a few authorities in Missouri that have enforcement authority there. And it's not the Attorney General's Office. It's the Secretary of State's office. It's the State Records Commission and your local records board. We're happy to give some general information about this, but when, when you talk about records retention, that is a chapter one oh nine issue, not a sunshine law issue with one exception. And this actually came up in a court case that our office filed. This was several years ago. For a county in the eastern half of the state where someone submitted a records request. You had a member of the public that just planted some records. And then this county decided to delete all of it after the record request was submitted. We view that to be a sunshine law violation. You're intentionally destroying something to avoid producing it to begin with. We think that that is a sunshine law issue, but normally speaking, whether you have to retain that note or that document or that email, whatever it might be, that is in chapter one oh nine of Missouri law, not the sunshine law. Does that make sense? Records production versus records retention? Okay. Any questions about that? I'll do my best, but that's not in our wheelhouse in the Attorney General's Office. We don't have that authority under, under Missouri law. Uh, I want to spend a little bit of time on electronic records. Um, also, one of those issues that the sunshine law hasn't really been modernized a whole lot. So, we just have to think to, well, what is a public record? And it's anything. It's, you know, any record is a public record. So, any record would be emails. But emails have some kind of interesting requirements. So, let's say you have an email that is being sent to a quorum of officials. That is for sure going to be a public record that has to be retained. It's likely going to be open for the most part, um, unless it's talking about a closed item. Best practice, uh, do everything on official channels, official email addresses, uh, not so much on personal devices. If you happen to, uh, you know, send a text message on a personal device or you send something from your Yahoo account into someone else's account, just forward it to the government account. That way, it's going to be retained. It's in the system. It could be reviewed if, if necessary. And the sunshine law does not have a provision specifically on this and you probably don't want to be the first case where there's too much, you know, private or public business going on, personal devices. Use official channels, use government accounts and that way you're avoiding these issues to begin with. You don't want to be the first case where the court of appeals said, you know, you can't do things on private devices. So, if you have a private device and you have something on there that's public business, forward it to your official account. And that way, it's going to be captured in cases of search that needs to be done by your board. Any questions about that?
Now, okay.
Yes?
On that one, if I was talking to another council member and it was not about any public business, and would that be an open record?
Oh, that's a great question. So, I can answer that, uh, because I'm also a public servant. I'm a state employee. You know, I have my, um, I have my, uh, my legal assistant's her cell phone number in my phone. We play Wordle together. I mean, that's not public business, right? I, you know, my Wordle is up and down or not going to be public business. Or, you know, if I'm, uh, you know, want to grab dinner with a coworker at the Rogers.
Okay, so something was requested supposedly and it was given out to someone because they requested a sunshine law and it was only a communication between me and another member?
Yes.
And had nothing to do with any council business or city business?
That's a great question. So, the sunshine law covers public business. And, you know, there's always this question under the sunshine law and surprisingly, you don't have a court of appeals opinion on this. We have some related opinions, so we're kind of divining the best guidance that we can from what is out there right now. And that is the sunshine law covers public business. So, if, you know, everyone has a personal cell phone these days and you happen to just communicate with someone casually, you know, "Happy birthday." You play Wordle, I gotta do, um, you want to grab the movie sometime. That's, it's not public business. You know, sunshine law applies to public business. But that said, let's say, you know, I'm texting my legal assistant about work and then someone sunshines the AG's office. I need to go through my personal phone and then give it over, you know, back to the office. You know, so that's why, you know, we're talking about number one, the best practices. Don't use your personal devices to conduct public business, but if you happen to or it just pops up for convenience, for ease, whatever the reason is, just take a screenshot of it, send it to your email account, send it to your custodian of records and that way, there's no doubt anyway. And then you don't need to get your personal phone over to your custodian of records. You know, there's, there's best practices around those.
So, this should have never been given out. It wasn't city business?
It was on a city email.
Yeah, so let's, let's get a little more specific.
Yeah, so let's, let's get a little more specific, it was done through city email.
Yeah, so that's.
So that's all public record.
So, yeah, this is a great question. So this happens in the attorney general's office, we're a public governmental body, just like, you know, the city is here. We get, we've got almost a thousand sunshine requests last year. It's really just in- instrumental about sunshine requests. And when we do our searches, you know, we're going to pull up a happy birthday. In a message that someone sent on their AGO, AG's office account to their coworker. Uh, you know, but if it gets caught up in a search term that we have it, you know, worry, worry Lisa. You know, does that relate to public business? No, but it's on a public device. Great, you know, so that's the question. You know, you're not going to find a court of appeals guidance on this, but I'll tell you in our office, we are, we err the side of if we have it. We're, we're sending it out there, you know, and again, sunshine law liability happens for improper withholding, not for disclosure. And you never want to be the test case that says you would help too much from a public. You know, is it public business and strictly speaking, no, but if the governmental body has it, that's what we do, we produce it.
So should the city hall be looking through all your emails and then tell a citizen that it's there? So they can sunshine it?
That would not be, I think, a question under sunshine law. That would be a chapter one oh nine record retention question. So does the governmental body have to retain it? So I'll tell you in the AG's office, we have emails that go back, I think we call it a hard ball. I think it goes back twenty years in our office. Every email that's ever been sent, we have it in our office. Do we have to? No, no. I mean, there's record retention schedules under that chapter one oh nine that says how long do you have to keep the email? We just keep it all, you know, we don't destroy things in our office. And you know, that's probably a best practice in a way that we don't have to keep you doing every document all the time. You know, our storage server space is very expensive, but, uh, you know, we don't want to err on the side of quick opening things in our office.
I have another question, um, related to what you're talking about with personal devices. If we have an email on, uh, you know, on your, our public. That said, that's talking about something and then it says, I sent you a text message, check that. So it was like obviously trying to avoid staying on the circuit. What, how does that, how do you, how does that deal with?
Yeah, so I think.
Public, private?
Then you're getting back, I think, into what you just talked about where the sunshine law covers what you have to produce if you have it. And then chapter one of nine and the record retention schedules is, do you need to retain it at all? And then where do you, and then if, you know, let's say you have a government issued cell phone. Um, in our, our office, we have AGO issued iPhones. Um, you know, we have ways to capture that. But if it's on a personal phone, you know, that's when you're getting into those, those thorny issues. Where if it's about public business, but it's on your private cell phone. You know, best practice, don't do it to begin with, but if you happen to do it inadvertently, accidentally. You know, people send a million text messages a day, take a screenshot, send it to your official email address. Um, you know, again, you don't want to be the first governmental body that, you know, is in trouble for hiding things on private devices.
Can I ask a follow up question along this, around the text? So I, I know there can be kind of a gray area of, you know, when is it public, when is it private? So let's say for, we have a, we had a situation, um, where we had an employee send a text to, to a person who was in a live council meeting and then the item was read out in council. It was requested, we were told that because it was on personal devices, we couldn't access that. But to me, that sounds like public business because it went to, it was from one public employee, went to another and was read out in council. So does that then make it discoverable under the sunshine law?
Well, again, sunshine law again talks about what does the governmental body have? And it's still an open question under Missouri law. You know, does the governmental body own, you know, your private text messages? But if it relates to public business, you know, does the governmental body have an obligation to, you know, go to the member's device? But if they don't turn it over, you know, these are really thorny issues that you're not going to find a clear case law on. But if you go back to those first principles, what the sunshine law says is that records of public business must be produced. You know, that you're just getting into, is that actually public business? Should it be on official devices? Some of those are probably under chapter one oh nine and the local record schedules under the sunshine law.
Okay, so I, I guess, and I apologize, I think I'm just a little unclear on the answer. I, and the answer that you may be giving me, maybe it depends and it may need to go through the court. Is that kind of what I'm hearing? I'm just trying to figure out because we, you know, we had an example where, you know, there was possibly an email that said, check your texts. And, you know, you kind of felt like that needed to be produced. Something that, you know, if it's clearly, if it's read out in, in council member by a public employee. Seems like that should also fall under the same thing, whereas it's a communication for, of public business and it should be.
Well, so again, the sunshine law talks about records of public business are subject to sunshine law. So then, you know, then you get into assessments, is any text messages, is any email actually about public business or not? Where is it stored? But again, if you think about the sunshine law speaks to public business being a public record, you know.
So, but everything should be handed over even if it doesn't have public business on government?
I don't think that's what I was saying. If I did, you know, I apologize, the sunshine law talks about records of public business. So in a, regardless probably where that's happening, if it's on a private device, again, the best practice, take a screenshot of it. Send it to your custodian, send it to your own official email address. And that way it could be captured in a search later on. That's what we do in our office. You know, if I happen to send my assistant and, you know, a text message in the dirt, she lets me know, hey, uh, you know, here's where the judge is meeting today about a court case. But she asked me to send it to my personal phone, okay, I'll take a screenshot of it, send it to my work account and, all right, yeah. That's just the easiest thing to do. Any other questions on this issue? Okay, records requests, um, in the interest of time, we'll kind of read through this as quickly as we can. Uh, most governmental bodies are pretty good about this one. A few things to keep in mind, the sunshine law does not require a specific submission method of a records request. They can be submitted in multiple ways, letter, email, phone call, in person, does not require a specific submission method. A governmental body must act on that request as soon as possible, no later than three business days. But it's important to remember, three business days after the custodian receives the request. The governmental bodies have a lot of employees. For example, in the AG's office, we have about three hundred employees, six hundred, three hundred employees. Our custodian doesn't know what information every member of our three hundred wide person organization gets a request for. So their custodian has to receive the request. So as a best practice, let's say I get a request from someone, I'm just sending it to my custodian to fill. The custodian has to be the person receiving a request to trigger the obligation to respond. That's why as a best practice, if someone who's not the custodian received the request for the request of the custodian, that way it can be processed. Uh, you know, submitting requests, um, you know, governmental body, you know, we, we receive a lot of requests in our office. For example, sometimes a request we receive are pretty easy to understand. You know, for example, give us a copy of a complaint someone filed, um, or you give me a copy of someone's calendar. But then sometimes our office receives a lot of requests that they're kind of hard to understand, kind of hard to parse through. So the request has to be understandable, but the custodian should always do their best job to broadly consider the request, try their best. If the custodian is not sure how to interpret a request, engage in a follow up correspondence and say, hey, here's what I think you're asking. Am I in the right path? And that way you have that dialogue going back and forth. For the response by the public governmental body, that's three business day rule I talked about before. That does not mean that all records have to be given in three days. It can take a long time to search for records and it takes us a long time in our office to search for records. If you have the record in three days and you find it, you've done your search, you found it in your three days, go ahead and produce it. But if it takes you more time, maybe you have a long queue of records requests or it's a very big request and you need more time. You still have to send a letter to the request order in three days. And that letter has to be very specific. That letter has to explain the cause for delay, why is it taking you so long? And maybe you have three hundred requests that have been submitted that same week. Uh, maybe the request is seeking two hundred thousand pages of documents. So explain why it's going to take you as a governmental body more time to produce than the three day rule. That letter has to be sent in three days. And then when you send that letter and you explain why it's going to take longer, that letter will have to give the earliest date and time that the record will be available. And it doesn't mean that, you know, you, you say three days or you say ten days. You need to give a date, a specific calendar date when the records will become available. There's actually a court case on this issue, there has to be a specific date provided in that estimated production deadline. Fees are tricky, um, you know, as a best practice, in our office, we don't charge fees for anyone. Requesting records, even if they're requesting a hundred thousand pages, it's all free in our office. You know, fees are tricky, they can be hard to calculate. Um, honestly, the slides or the provision of the sunshine law that talk about fees are a bit hard to parse through about what are permissible fees? What aren't permissible fees? You know, you just want to err on the side of providing records to the public, you know, at maybe the lowest possible cost, being as quick as you can. And you'll generally avoid issues with fees if you, you know, have a good fake estimate, it's the lowest estimate possible. And that way the public can get their records as quickly as possible. Yes?
If we prepare documents under a sunshine request and it's, say it's a very large request and we charge that individual for the time as, um, according to our ordinance. And then someone else comes and requests the same information, well, we've already gathered all of the information. Do we charge that person the same amount? Or because we didn't have to put the time into, into it that we did with the first request, do we?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. There's no court case on this. The way that the attorney general's office would do the situation is that for the second request order, assuming you still have all those files gathered. That should take about eight and a half seconds to produce and it should probably be free. Or, or whatever eight seconds of time is what costs. You know, I, I, I do not think that it makes a whole lot of sense to that double charge. And let's say ten people want it, then are you charging ten people a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars? You know, it only, you only need to do the search once, so.
So you're saying, don't be first in line?
Good, good question, good question. You know, the fees statutes are pretty tricky in the sunshine law, but, you know, we're happy to try to wade through that with any governmental body if you want to contact us after the presentation. Um, again, best practices, best practices for responding to sunshine law requests. All employees should know who your custodian is. That is why in the attorney general's office, you know, let's say someone submitted a records request to one of our attorneys. That attorney will always forward the request to the custodian, so that it's going to be processed for request to the custodian. Records can held, be held in a lot of locations, especially electronically. You know, maybe you have computer drop picks, maybe you have, you know, a cloud account, maybe you have government issued cell phones. Do a diligent search for wherever records might be stored. Do a diligent search and that way you know you're going to capture as many things as possible to respond to the request order. Have a tracking spreadsheet, you know, that's always a best practice as well. We're happy to, we give a model sample tracking spreadsheet if any governmental body doesn't, doesn't have one. You know, you want to track the requests so that you're keeping track of where the requests are coming from, what your deadlines are. That's always a best practice under the sunshine law. And again, finally, be very specific, if you cannot provide records within the three days. That initial letter should be very specific explaining why is it going to take a bit longer to produce records. Closed records, just in the interest of time here, now we're running short. The same provisions of section six ten dot zero two one for meetings, when closing meetings, those same statutes apply the same way for records. So remember, attorney client privilege device, certain real estate transactions, personnel decisions. Those same provisions apply to records as they do with meetings. Uh, the best practice is to redact rather than withholding a whole document. Maybe the whole document is privileged, okay, and you might withhold a whole document, but there's only two or three sentences in there that are, you know, really the sensitive, sensitive things. When in doubt, redact. Uh, the sunshine law does require that, that's not a best practice. The sunshine law will require redaction when possible, uh, whenever you can. Any questions about closed records?
Yes, do we have to take minutes then in closed meetings?
Yes, that's a great question. So minutes, minutes do have to be taken for closed meetings. That is a requirement under section six ten dot zero two zero dot seven. There must be minutes of closed meetings. And the other, I think, follow up question to that, um, there is a court case that does say that a closed session meeting minutes are able to be closed themselves to the public. Again, it's not mandatory, the sunshine law rarely has a mandatory closed things. But the sunshine law, according to a court case, has held that minutes from a closed session are at least authorized to be closed. You know, best practice might make sense to redact closed minutes if someone asks for them. And then either way, any votes in closed session, the votes are going to be open either way under the sunshine law, even if the vote happened in closed session.
So as members of council, you can ask for closed record minute, closed meeting records of a year ago, even though you weren't on council?
That would not be a sunshine law question, unfortunately. You know, it's a difficult question, you know, can someone that's in a public governmental body sunshine their own public governmental body? There's no court case on it and I don't think that's probably a sunshine law question. That might be more of a, you know, decision for the governmental body to have to make on their own. And there might be certain other statutes that talk about what is the authority, you know, of any elected official, of any council, any commission. But that probably would not be a strict sunshine law question.
But the only thing required in closed session minutes is votes.
Uh, in addition to the, the date, time.
Time, who's there.
Place, who's present, who's absent. And that's the only minimally required information. We encourage as a best practice, let's go above and beyond. You know, there's our dispute about what happened. You know, for example, you just remember because people forget, it's good to go above and beyond. But minimally speaking, what is required, date, time, place, members present, members absent, the roll call vote. And, uh, the statute that was cited to closing meetings to begin with.
I just have one question related to this slide. So we're talking about closed records, so we're not, we're not only talking about minutes, right? We're talking about, this is a broader application or are you?
Yes, correct.
So for example, um, there was a packet of information that, that came out in January and some people are trying to gain access to it. It does have some, some names of personnel, but your recommendation, if somebody sunshines this, the city could release this if they redact the names of the personnel. And there's no other easily, information that allows the person to easily identify the person.
Every record is different and without, you know, anyone seeing, that me, anyone seeing what the full batch is. I mean, there are some circumstances where, you know, maybe the whole batch hypothetically was given to, you know, an attorney or provided from the attorneys and legal advice. Uh, you know, maybe then you'll have a whole lot of documents that are entirely withheld, but the best practice, um, and I'll actually correct that. The sunshine law does say when possible redact unless, you know, making redactions will still reveal enough about it, people will figure it out. You know, so sometimes you might not redact just the name, but there might be some other identifying characteristics that could be redactable, uh, under the sunshine law. But every document is going to be different, needs to be assessed on its own merits.
Thank you.
Well, so we're about reaching the end here. Again, I will circulate the slides so that everyone can view them later. The slides conclude with some general thoughts, some best practices, top ten things to know about the sunshine law. And again, if any governmental bodies erring on the side of transparency, erring on the side of promoting discussion, informed debate. Opening, uh, discussion rather than closing discussion. Most governmental bodies will avoid ninety percent of pitfalls just by, you know, remembering what those general transparency requirements are in sunshine law. Sunshine law does have a lot of gray area, we're looking for some court of appeals guidance in some topics. But I hope that this information is helpful so at least the city knows where our office is coming from, how we do the sunshine law. And we're always happy to do our best to answer questions at, at any time. Any final questions? Any final questions?
Um I have a, a couple. So one of my questions is, if there, let's say that there's a sunshine law complaint uh and it goes to the attorney general's office, the attorney general's office says, we believe that this is a violation of the sunshine law. So what are the next steps? What are, what are the consequences, what happens, how does that play out?
So that is a great question. So our complaint process, we approach issues as much as possible from education, training and compliance. You know, we are also a governmental body and sometimes it doesn't make sense for one governmental body to sue another. It's a lot of taxpayer dollars, a lot of taxpayer resources. And if we could, you know, cut things off at the head to avoid future instances, that is our approach. You know, thinking education is better than spending a lot of time in court. Court cases go very slow, they can take a long time and they can be very expensive. We will go to court if we have to. We have a number of sunshine law cases presently that we filed over the last year or two. Um but uh and you know, we, we view that on its own merits. You know, if we get a lot of complaints on an issue and maybe we have tried training, we tried education, we've kept trying and trying and trying and it's just not getting through. You know, those are things that we think about in our office before we decide whether we'll go to court or not. The other thing to keep in mind is that the attorney general's office, we're not given authority to just fine, to fine people. That's what courts are there for. The courts ultimately make the decisions at the end of the day. And courts have the authority to award fines and a lot of attorney's fees, which can be very expensive if the governmental body does not win the lawsuit. Uh the fines can be uh one thousand dollars for a knowing violation, five thousand dollars for a purposeful violation. Uh but a lot of the fees tend to be attorney's fees, it's sunshine law fees. And those could be, I've seen bills that are worth quarter of a million dollars um in private attorney's fees if the, if the governmental body loses the case. So you know, our office, we try training, we try education as much as we can. Uh before we go to court, we'll go to court if we have to for certain situations. Um and we're always happy to help, give some informal guidance on possible issues.
Okay, thank you. Um also, one of the things that I've heard you say a couple of times is, you know, um governments get in trouble for, and I'm misquoting you, but for basically withholding too much rather than with sharing too much. So um uh I guess at what point, so if, if there's communication, let's say it's, it's on the, the city email. Um and so, but it's kind of internal communication. Let's say you've reached out to um a public employee who's in charge of an area and you've asked a question because a citizen is concerned over an issue. Um and you relate that and they relate back their answer. Is that, I mean, is that number one sunshineable and number two, is it just shareable? If you didn't want to have, have to make somebody jump through the hoops of going through the sunshine request, is there a problem with sharing that?
I'm not sure I'm quite following the question, I'm sorry.
So, so let's say, for example, um a citizen had reached out to us on um an issue related to one of, to, let's say it was um something related to, I don't, I'm going to make this up because I've never had an issue with the fire department. So somebody said, I think that there, that the fire department was violating uh city ordinance. Um and so then, let's say I then turned around, reached out to the fire chief and I said, okay, here's, here's the citizen's concern. And then the fire chief had responded to me. So that has never happened, I've never had correspondence with the fire chief, just sort of remains. You know, um but anyway, so now that's of interest most likely to the citizen who's asked the question. But am I able to share that email with, with the citizen or is that something that they have to go through sometimes?
So I'll give you a hypothetical, let's say someone asks me in the attorney general's office, uh you know, hey, can I get a copy of, you know, your court filing and case? I'll probably send it over. I might also pass along to our custodian, who's the statutorily designated holder of all the records. And that way it's processed as a sunshine law request, but just as a matter of public service. If it takes me ten seconds and I have, you know, a, a brief that I filed and someone wants it, I could, I could do so if I wanted to. But you know, as a best practice, we encourage all records requests to be forward to the custodian. The custodian has certain statutory duties and makes everyone, uh you know, you respect the integrity of the process. You can track requests, you know, who's requesting things, what's being released, that way it's all consolidated. Um and uh you know, that way it also helps the public as well to, you know, prevent the public from, you know, having to go to ten different people. They just know, if they want something, go to the custodian. Um but I, I mean, I don't think anything in the sunshine law prohibits someone from wanting to, whether for ease convenience. Here you go, here's something that I have.
Okay, I just want to.
Did that answer the question?
It does, it's just, it's been a concern over the last couple of years, making sure I'm not oversharing, but it sounds like that isn't a problem, um as long as it's public business.
The only penalties in the sunshine law I'm aware of are for improper withholding, not for oversharing.
Oversharing, okay. Um and then I think the only other question I have is, um how broad can a sunshine law request be?
As a great question. So uh I'll go back to one slide where there's two principles that I want to highlight. So uh I'll start off by giving you an example. So in the attorney general's office, our attorney general cares very deeply about uh human trafficking concerns, especially in labor and sex trafficking. It's, it is a problem across the country and Missouri has a lot of interstate highways going through it. So a couple, about a year ago actually, we received a records request where someone wanted every record in our office of human trafficking. We got over two hundred fifty thousand potentially responsive documents. I mean, it's just, it is a broad request, give us everything you have on human trafficking efforts. We do a lot of organ in that area, you know, wasn't uh specific to a specific, um you know, instance or investigation or a meeting, it was everything about this term. We processed it. Could we have followed up with the requestor and said, this is too broad, we're going to deny the request? I mean, maybe. And that's why on this slide here, the second bullet point, is a quote from a court case that said that a request must be specific enough that a reasonably competent custodian of records would understand. You know, that's still a kind of a subjective standard, you know? What is a reasonably competent custodian of records? What is a reasonable language? What is something too broad? Uh you know, that is why we also encourage following up the requestor and saying, this might be a little broad. Am I in the right path? Can you narrow it a bit? Maybe they can narrow by date ranges or names of employees. The sunshine law certainly does not prohibit that interactive discussion with the requestor. We encourage, uh we do that in our office all the time, uh even though we did process that human trafficking request for for documents that took a very long time with a lot of people to go through.
For free?
For free, we don't charge anyone anything in this office. Which is part of the reason it might take a while for people to get records, you know? So that is one thing that, uh I mean, a lot of governmental bodies, uh you know, they might need to recoup the costs. Um but the sunshine law should not be a way to discourage people from submitting records requests. There's a case right now that's pending, um again, to the city of St. Louis who tried to charge a member of the public, it was about a hundred thousand dollars to fill the, fill the request. Now, I will say, I've seen that request, it is a broad request. But when you talk about a hundred thousand dollars to get public records, you know, there's a lot of tension between those two things. You know, very broad request plus staff time, um you know, when, and so those are tricky questions to navigate through. So as a best practice, talk to the requestor, see if they can narrow it and that way everyone wins a debate.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I just want to go back and ask again, you said that I, as a council member, can talk about anything I want to and it would not be uh an agenda, it does not necessarily have to be an agenda item as long as there's no action taken on that.
Right, so to clarify, there's a court case right now that's pending, it's against the fire protection district. Part of the concern in that case is there were members of that district that were talking about things in an open section of public meeting, not on the agenda. And all that we can say in our office is that there are a lot, there's a lot of tension, you know, between any American's first amendment rights, being able to talk about what they want. And also that a governmental body can only act through a quorum, but also talking about maximizing public importance. You know, that's not a strict answer because we don't have an answer from the court of appeals yet, at least on that case. We're hoping to get a lot more guidance. You know, so what we're left with is encourage public transparency, put as many things on agenda as possible. Worst case scenario, run out of time, talk about it next meeting. Um so as a best practice, we encourage putting things on agenda, whether it's one person wanting to talk about things or eight people wanting to talk about things. Uh you know, the, the challenge is that, you know, meetings can't take all day on the one hand. But uh you know, the public should be able to determine, should they attend a meeting or not? And then, you know, everyone should also be mindful that, let's say, one person does want to talk about something. You know, but then if you have too many people that want to add to that, then you have a whole council talking about it at the day and then you're getting into sunshine law problems. So as a best practice, put it on the agenda or wait until next meeting. I know it's not the most simple answer, but there's a lot of tension in those principles. The sunshine law just encourages transparency whenever possible. Any final questions before we wrap up for the day? Well, I hope this was helpful. I, we appreciate the city's cooperation as we were reviewing some of these matters. You know, we know that there's a lot of hot button issues and again, our office is here to be helpful when we can. You know, uh put on our enforcement hats when we have to, but we want to be helpful, we want to go education. Um and try to cut out some of these issues at the head before things get, um you know, messier for the public. So be in touch if anyone has questions or additional issues that they want to talk about with us. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to second, all the way over to San Antonio.